What are we reading?
Okay, we're gonna call the, thank you, we're gonna call the Tuesday, August 24th, work session to order. Thank you all for coming. Item number two are comments from citizens on issues that are not on the agenda. If anyone wishes to address this body on something that's not on this agenda, we'll be glad to listen. If not, we'll go ahead and move right on to item number three, flood mitigation program report. Mr. Stuckey.
Yes, I'm gonna ask Tom Marsh from our Building and Neighborhood Services Department to come up and join me, but we've done some work in the last two weeks with TIMA officials looking in greater detail at the hazard mitigation program, which is the program that the state would apply on local government's behalf for grant dollars that would help purchase properties impacted by flood and that fit into community plans for mitigation and those areas. So what we would like to do is give you greater description of that program and specifically an outline of how we would propose we move forward with the program and again, a voluntary program for property owners and how we might structure that and the timeframe we would operate within. So let me have Tom take you through that and we'll be glad to answer any other questions at the end.
Thanks Eric. Good evening. And as Eric mentioned, we just want to give you an update on where we are and what we've learned so far. And the first thing is the update that on the 12th of August, City of Franklin team members met with representatives from TIMA. And as we mentioned at the last meeting, the funding for the program still has not been established through FEMA and TIMA, and that's expected by the end of this year. We did confirm that City of Franklin is eligible to participate. On our own, we will submit our own projects for approval by TIMA, but that's based on our participant in a hazard mitigation program that covers the full county. And just a reminder of some things we talked to you about before on the HMGP program, eligible activities are those that significantly reduce or permanently eliminate the loss of life and property. And as we talked last meeting, two phases. Phase one is the acquisition of residential properties, which is what we're focusing on. And once again, it's a 75-25 match with the state. I said they will cover half of that, so the city will only be obligated for 12.5% of the purchase price if we decide to go this route. Go ahead.
Didn't they change that last meeting? Didn't they say they were gonna pay 90?
That's true on the overall project, but in this program, it remains 75-25. So within the typical reimbursements that we're getting for flood response costs, et cetera, that's shifted to 90-10.
Those are 90-10s.
But within this program, it remains 75-25.
Okay.
Okay, and some of the details or things we've confirmed on this phase one acquisition, it is a voluntary program. The residents must submit a letter of interest, but they have the option to withdraw right up until the closing on the property. Flood insurance is not required. We've batted that one around a few times and with a few different points of contact. And at the August 12th meeting, we got a definitive answer that flood insurance is not required. So that opens it up to a few more potential participants. The properties that have been determined to be substantially damaged, we've all talked about that a lot, that's those that are evaluated that the cost of repair is 50% or greater to the value of the property pre-damage. So if they are substantially damaged, then they do not require a benefit cost analysis. The program is open to other properties that we can propose, but that benefit cost analysis is required for those if they're not substantially damaged. If we pursue the program, if the city purchases some properties, we are required to demolish the structures within 90 days of closing on the property. And then the last bullet there is kind of a kicker, the property must remain in ownership of the city. Dedicated, open space.
Does the cost of the demolition go into the cost of the acquisition?
That can be part of, that can be factored into part of our match, the funds we contribute. And then the last thing we want to get into is a little bit about process, the recommendation we would bring forward to you to consider. The first thing is we mentioned, this is a voluntary program and the applicants have to submit a letter of interest to participate. And so the first thing is conducting a public meeting, we'll advertise and promote it across the community, get the word out, more explanation about the program. Then after that, we would provide the 30-day period within which the property owners, the residents can submit their letter of interest. We will, of course, have that letter of interest ready for them to just sign and get back to us, but they would give them 30-day period for that. Proposal for priorities, number one would be the substantially damaged properties in the floodplain. Number two would be the properties that are not substantially damaged, but they are in the floodplain and it would benefit the community from a mitigation standpoint. Then finally, any other properties that may benefit the community from a mitigation standpoint.
You did say this was residential buyout?
Correct. And, and we probably should have put a note in there, residential and the property had to be occupied on the date of the disaster. It could not be a vacant residential property. And that was an interesting discussion the day of the meeting. We have one or two properties that are identified as vacant and currently on the market. And we asked the question, well, why can't we just go out and buy those properties before somebody builds something on them and they're not eligible?
Number two, right there, excuse me.
Vacant or inhabitable?
Had to be occupied to be eligible for this program.
So if somebody was, one was like there was two days where someone moved out before someone moved in, and that just happened to be May 1st, then they're out of luck.
And there were you, yeah, that's our understanding. And TIMA will evaluate each project that is proposed?
I mean, it would make sense to me if there was somewhere that was uninhabitable or, you know, vacant in the long-term sense of the word.
Right.
But, I mean.
Yeah, we went through that in pretty good detail with them, but that's the way we understand it, that it's got, you gotta be able to show occupancy the day of the event.
Right. And if, you know, the utility bills were current on the property at the time, and like you said, if it was a tenant that just happened to move out a few days before and the owner hadn't gotten someone in, how do you determine vacancy or occupancy on that date? And that's something that would be looked at in each case.
And I think those are the kind of things we could still bring forward if we have some situations like that and go through that with them and state.
And then the next steps in the process is, once we receive those letters of interest, then the city would have to evaluate and rank the properties based on the priorities we talked about and assess the cost of the acquisition and the cost to maintain, the long-term maintenance. In terms of the cost of the acquisition, after the properties are proposed, we would have a, an appraisal of each property to determine the market value for the purchase.
The cost to maintain?
After the demolition?
Yeah, that's not, that's just what I was asking.
The cost to maintain after demolition.
We're gonna continue to be the owner, so we're gonna have to mow or maintain or whatever over time. And that may be one of the things we look at. One of the other nuances that we think is an opportunity here is there seems that there, one of the recommendations TIMA made up front was separate substantially damaged from non-substantially damaged and submit those as two grants. But as we talked a little further, we also talked about, say there's a situation where there's two substantially damaged and there's a third right next to it that's 35 or 40% damaged. And there is also an option where you can average a group of properties together and sort of look at it that way. They're open to looking at that as well. It's probably not as clean as just submitting a group that's all substantially damaged, but you could see a situation where you've got a group of properties together that might make sense to acquire and provide some mitigation through that. And so that is an opportunity for us as well.
That'd be number two and number three on the slide before this.
In terms of the priorities?
Yeah.
It'd really be, yeah, you'd have maybe a one that fits the definition of number two, that's right next to a couple of properties that's in the number one category, and you say, look, collectively, it doesn't make sense to leave one house and have the neighbors purchased and taken as part of the program and as part of mitigation. That would contribute to greater mitigation long-term. And there's an ability to sort of do some averaging amongst a group of properties that makes sense in a, from a mitigation strategy approach.
Can you use the land for something once you own it? Can we use it for a community park or?
Yes.
Right.
So that if it was in a neighborhood, maybe we could talk to the neighborhood association to maintain it for a community park or some other, our garden, community garden.
Our garden.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, you could, you would just have to maintain the underlying title to that property, but you could have some other arrangements. There are specific things you need to look at that you can't do.
Right.
Permanent structures, that kind of thing. But you could do, those are the type of things that sound like those would be acceptable. Even if you had something there that was stored that could be moved, that would be okay. That was brought up as a specific. So there is some ability to work with some of those.
There may be ways to work with people in the community, the neighborhood, to maybe maintain it.
But the mayor said he, when he grows up, he would like to mow the grass.
I do.
So you could do that.
I could do that.
You can take care of that.
Here you go. I could, I have my garden out there.
Community garden?
You wouldn't want my garden. Careful this year, I don't know what happened.
I know.
So I guess, last thing in terms of process, once we got those letters of interest and assembled the data for you, it would be up to your determination as to whether we would actually participate, what projects, what properties we would actually propose, based on what our match and the ongoing maintenance cost would be.
The structure to this is coming from recommendations we got from TIMA in this discussion. It's honestly a little different than I imagined it originally, but it's really sort of a, open it up to everybody in the community, and if they have an interest, they can let us know of that interest. And then we'll do an assessment and look at what fits those priorities, the priority 1, 2, 3, and then come forward with what is appropriate from our standpoint to submit as a grant application. Because really, we're the sub-grante, they're the grant, they apply for the grant and the federal government is the grantor in this situation. So really, this would give us an opportunity to see all who are interested while we are opening it up and want to communicate that to all residents. Suggest we pay some particular attention to contacting those in substantially damaged properties to make sure they're aware, but also provide the overall notification within the community and let folks come forward and see what that looks like and see how those fit into our ability to do mitigation long-term. And again, it's all voluntary. So these are folks that are willing to come forward in that way, and then we look at how that fits into our ability to provide mitigation.
But the city still go out 12.5%.
You'd still have to pay 12.5% and you gotta think about how you maintain that beyond that on an ongoing basis.
We could end up with an odd arrangement of patchwork, pieces of property around the city that we would have to continue to maintain.
Some would say we've done that.
I'd say which we have now.
We may have done that.
Well, that's not necessarily all bad if you're thinking about a park, you know.
And bother neighbors, neighborhood crews.
And so we really, yeah.
You get them to cut the grass and then, you know, a couple of years.
Think of the tourists.
See, that's great.
Let's say, look at all the lovely parks.
Might have a reenact third month.
Well, I guess what we'd like to do is just get some sense, if you're comfortable with us moving forward in a program like this, we want to have some lead time to get the word out. Probably the soonest we do it would be middle to late September, run it an open application period or a letter of interest period for about 30 days, and then assess what came in from that and make recommendations about how those fit into priorities and rankings from there.
So how, and I don't want to, if everybody else knows, how are you gonna notify the property owners? You gonna notify each individual property owner that they are eligible for this program that you believe are eligible?
Yeah, we've got some property owners who have already contacted us. We've been, you know, the original batch of letters that went out a few months ago that we've looked at in detail, that we've been in contact with all along and they've just kind of been waiting to see where this goes. We've got a few of those, we've got a few others that we've got contact information for that we will go to them and say, you are definitely a good candidate for this, are you interested? And then the next, otherwise it'll just be a public meeting and getting publicity out about. It's available for anyone.
To be considered.
You got your list.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
And our substantially damaged list would clearly be part of that, that we would do some direct outreach on. The rest of it is just general public information and getting the word out that way. We have been placing this on the website from the beginning, that this would be something we'd be looking at, so we've had some people submit through that. So we just get the word out and see what comes back and evaluate it from there.
Okay, that's it?
That's it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Item number four, discussion employee pension options. We decided to put this on the work session instead of have a separate pension. If we start to go too long, we can certainly do that, but we thought maybe we might be able, might be able to move through this tonight. So Mr. Stuckey, I will leave it up to you.
I'll be glad to do that. And I'll also ask Russ and Shirley if they want to join me up here, if maybe some questions or points of clarification they can provide us. We'll pull this up. Basically, what we took as our charge from the last meeting was to run some scenarios that really reflected how these different options might look for different employees joining us. And so what we chose to do was, we picked three different ages, employees joining us at 25, 35, and 45, at pay grade 13, which is generally encapsulates firefighters, police officers, and a good number of some of our administrative and public works employees. So it didn't get, it doesn't get everybody, but it's a pretty good representation, probably captures a very good portion of our employees. And so I think that's, when you look at our employees hired over the last five years, gives you some average ages and some broad categories. And we got fire, police, public works, and other, all in that, upper twenties to mid-thirties range in terms of what age they were when we hired them. And sort of, I think that supports the idea of those ages that we ended up running as options to sort of show you how that might work. When you look at the set of assumptions that we made, we ran option two, which is the existing pension program with a 5% employee contribution. We ran option three, which is a revised version of our pension plan that is more mimics TCRS in terms of how that's structured. Then option five, we have two columns for option five, because if you remember, option five is defined contribution where there's a one-for-one employer match with the employee. So with a minimum of 3% and a maximum of 8%. So if you put in 5%, the city would match 5% in your defined contribution account, and then the employee's responsible for managing those funds and allocating those funds. We made some basic assumptions about the growth of wages over the, over the time period. We picked sort of a 2% inflationary growth and then a 1% additional salary growth. So that makes for a 3% a year growth. We started everybody about $35,000, which is about the right spot for a pay grade 13. And then we made some basic assumptions about investment earnings. Again, did this across, similarly across all of the options at 6%. And then each of these is covered by, describes the unique employer-employee division of the costs. In the option two, there's a 7% cost borne by the employer and a 5% by the employee. And option three, we just did that all as employer at 8% with no employee contribution. Of course, those are all things that could be adjusted. And then option five is, as I described, a one-for-one match with whatever the employee put in in a defined contribution setting. We used a three-year averaging on option two, which is an averaging of the three highest consecutive years of service and in terms of the salary. TCRS uses a five-year averaging, so that's what we used there. And so that sort of describes how those work. The expected distribution rate, I believe that relates to what the drawdown would be needed, given that age of retirement and life expectancy after that. Did I describe that accurately?
Yes.
Okay. So those are the base assumptions. We tried to be equal across the board in terms of how we handled those, and then you'll see how they roll through each of the examples. The first example is an age 25 employee joining us at age 25 and how that looks. And Russ and Shirley, you may want to help me kind of make sure I explain this accurately.
I do want to say about something before you go on. On the very bottom, and I know we've all worked on this, but it shows the final salary, the last year of service is 82, 480. When we get down to it at age 70, there's 15 years more of service added to that, so it's gonna be a little skewed. We'll explain.
Okay, okay. So this just takes you through and shows what the employer contribution would be, the employee contribution, what their annual benefit would be at 25 years of service, at 30 years of service, and then what that annual benefit would look at like at different age Any questions you have about how this breaks out or how we interpreted any of this?
One of the things back on the previous page is investment earnings rate, you know, at 6%. I do not think that we can count on that at least for a while, because when you go over here and look at what the earning investments rates of people that have, are participating in a plan, it's like for over 10 years, 1% or less than 1%. So, and that's out on the market, the way these things would be. So we need to look at that and, so that's the one thing on that.
And that's a tricky number, I mean, because we've had the performance we had in the last 12 months, which was much better than that. But then you look at the previous 12 months, 14 years there, and it wasn't as strong. So we tried to pick a number that we thought was, over the long haul, a reasonable number. But yeah, that, we had to pick some.
Well, as long as, as long as you pick the same number for all of them, what you're trying to show here is not necessarily what the max that somebody can make, it's the comparison between of the four options.
I was just trying to think if one of, one of those comparisons would have an advantage over a higher yield than another. I don't know if it would.
Well, it wouldn't, because if it's, if it's employer-funded, then we'd have to have the, we'd have to put the money in there. Whereas if it's just, if you're on your own, then you get what you get. If it's employer-funded though, we're gonna, we would put the money in.
You had a minimum guarantee on it.
That's right.
To the employee, the defined benefit as a formula, it doesn't really matter what is earned. Matters to us, because we have to make the contributions.
You gotta fill the gap if.
That's right.
Right.
From the difference of their pay.
But to have a level playing field, we applied the same earnings factor to all the variations.
And let me ask you one, this is kind of a technical question, but on the one, I guess it's option three, where the employer contributes everything, is that right? And the, okay. When the employer contributes everything, then we do not pay taxes on those. Whereas if we pay the employee and then they put it back in, you have to take out not only the taxes on it, but the social security tax on it.
It will be, it will be pre-tax dollars.
That's right, pre-tax and post-tax income on that. And so that does make a little.
So you don't have to pay, we don't pay social security match on that number?
Not on the employer part of it, that's, that's right, isn't it?
Well, I, well.
No, it is, I believe, I believe if it's like TCRS.
I think if it's the, if it's in the defined contribution, we may have to ask David to verify.
I was gonna say, yeah. And that's, that may be very minor here, but it does make a little difference.
I mean.
You're talking about two different.
I think it's more than.
In the employee contribution, would be made on a pre-tax basis. Those amounts would still be subject to employment tax, though, to social security.
For this, that's option two for social security?
Social security, but not income tax.
The employee, but not the employer, the employer.
Matching, matching social security.
Not on this, if it's pre-tax, right?
Would the employer have to pay its share of social security taxes on that contribution that the?
On the employee contribution, yes. But the employer contribution is?
The employer contribution that we don't pay on.
We pay the social security either way, whether it's contributed or not. It's gross earnings. For the employee.
I don't, I don't know that, because I know with TCRS, that's one of the reasons they went to the employer putting in all the money, was because they didn't have to pay.
Well, we can check on that.
Okay, as I say, that's kind of small, but still, whatever I was looking at there. Okay.
Now, state employer only contributing to option three?
I think that's what it says, isn't it?
Well, what we wanted to do for comparison, and those were the different options that we showed, was continue knowing no contribution by the employee, but have a lesser formula. And that's what option three really is.
I think what they're looking at though is someone inadvertently put employer, employer instead of having an employee.
It's fixed on the screen, but the second line, the second line.
The second one is supposed to be employee.
On all of these should say employee, not employer. So the top line is employer, the second line is employee.
I was looking at the same thing when I, the last time I had EE on it, and I was like.
It is fixed on the screen, but it wasn't in the handout.
No, but that does mean the employee is not, is not paying anything. But that was what, back on the previous page, it did have zero in.
Second one on the first?
Second one on all of them.
Yeah. Should be EE.
The second one.
Right, it's the employee.
On both of those two groups.
Right.
So that describes someone in that situation. Guys, help me describe the charts here a little bit.
While you're looking.
Okay.
Now, your TC.
RS, yeah.
RS. You don't make the contribution to that.
That is correct. And they changed that over.
Because that's not what I was, that's not what I've been familiar with, obviously.
Well, that's what we are here, now.
No, we're not TCRS now.
No, I know, but we don't.
We're non-contributory.
But when we were looking at TCRS, when we were looking at in that, and to be honest with you, John, the, I guess, the highlight of TCRS was the fact that the administrative cost could possibly be the only cost that we had.
No, no, no. We have, we have a contribution, right?
Yeah. Well, we had several options on that. But what we were looking at was the administrative costs on TCRS were up and down. And I think they made that presentation one night, they said it was like 8%. But if you go back and look, it could be as high as 15%.
Not the administrative, the contribution.
That's the total contribution.
That's the contribution, not the administrative.
It will start at eight, but it will likely grow over time as your group.
So that's not?
Grows in ages.
Okay.
If we.
If we went to TCRS, it'd be 11. But what we determined when we looked at this last time is that we could do TCRS within our program at about 3% cheaper. So that was when it made sense for us to just amend our program to look like TCRS. Yeah, but you're right, it's 11% is the starting point now if we truly went to TCRS. But one of the things we learned when we looked at this at our last presentation was that we could mimic TCRS at 3% less. So that's what we, that's what option three really reflects. But, you know, we could, we could look at a different mix of employer-employee contribution if you like. We just wanted to show that as an example of a non-contributory program, if that was something you wanted to look at. We can tweak all of these based on that, but that just shows you what that might look like.
Yeah, I think the indication that we had from the last meeting that we had was to bring back four distinct options, really, really three with the defined contribution either being a low or high option, and show you what the numbers were.
Any other questions on that chart? Tried to show you the numbers here. The next two graphs describe, show sort of, on the bottom axis show age, and then the vertical axis shows you basically, that's the multiples of salary at that point that would be available or accumulated for employee. point that would be available or accumulated for employee in a defined, defined contribution at termination.
Well, if you, if you started at thirty-five thousand and you ended at, let's say, double that.
Actuary to help. Go ahead, keep going.
Actually, I like this chart.
That's because you, here, you know why?
Because you can say whatever you want to say, and we'll go, oh, yeah, that's good.
Oh, yeah, that's good.
This chart here, this chart, what this chart represents is on a defined contribution plan, when you retire, you have a ability to take a bucket of money. So, so somebody at age sixty-five, if you put in sixteen percent of pay, he's going to take a bucket of money equal to twelve times his final pay.
Okay. So if at sixty-five, you're making eighty thousand dollars, that's your?
And if you put in total six percent, three, three percent match, three percent employer at age sixty-five, you're going to take about five, five times your final pay.
An lump sum.
An lump sum, yeah.
Okay, so if you're making eighty thousand dollars.
That is one thing about if, when, when the employee makes contributions, they can actually take a lump sum.
So, so if you did the eight percent match and you, and, and this is your age, so if at, if at sixty, you, because that's kind of a crossbar, you, you enter, you'd get ten times your salary, so you're making eighty-three thousand dollars, you get eight-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars.
That's total sixteen percent of pay going in, eight percent from both, eight percent from employer.
I just didn't know what that number was.
Right. So I, I liked it because it's, it's hard to say, well, how much money are you going to make? Well, nobody knows how much money you're going to make at a certain age, but with your multiple pay, it makes much more sense when somebody says, okay, I'm going to have that much money in a pot to take with me.
Now, that's based upon though.
Oh, these are the same assumptions that your, Russ has, six percent.
Because if you, if all of a sudden you got a giant raise, if you went from being a policeman to the city administrator the last four years, that, those numbers would be.
They wouldn't quite giant, right? It's assuming that everything's smooth, you don't have a, as they call it, a black swan there.
So this shows you the min and max of that defined contribution. Somebody at three percent all the way through, and somebody at eight percent all the way through.
All right, the next chart.
This one's true.
It's much more fun.
This chart's much more fun. And let me give a couple of clarifications here.
Baby, talk up a little bit.
I'm sorry. A couple, this next chart is, is similar in nature, but it's to say, instead of taking your pot of money, you're going to take a monthly benefit for the rest of your life. Okay, and this is as, as a percent of pay or multiple pay. So the blue, the blue line there is your current pension plan. So if somebody retires at age, say, sixty-six, he's going to get eight percent of his pay on an annual basis. Okay?
If, if they started at twenty-five, so they started at forty-one years of service, or forty years of service when they retired.
On the blue line, they're going to get eight percent.
Eighty percent. If he retires at fifty-five, he's going to get about sixty percent of pay. The yellow line is the TCRS line. So the T S S line, say if you retire at sixty-seven, he crosses the line, he's going to get about sixty percent of his pay on an annual basis when he leaves the plan. Now, Russ went to his website to get what he calls the payout rates, and let me explain what the, and that's expected distribution rates. And that's where if you look at this previous chart with the numbers on it, you had percents of pay at the bottom there. This, where's your assumptions page?
There were said two pages in front of it.
Yeah, the bottom of the line on the right-hand column has four-point-six, five-point-five.
It's the second page.
Second page.
One of the assumptions.
Right.
Right out to the end.
Right. So what that, what that represents, because the website they use, they explained it, and when you retire, when you retire, the expected joint life of your spouse and you is ninety-two. When you retire, say at sixty-five, be a married spouse, one of, at least one of those two spouses is going to be alive at ninety-two.
Really?
Yes. At least one, not both of them, at least one.
No, no, but I, I, I thought like the average expected life of, of, is in the seventies.
It is, but, but at least one of those two will still be alive at eighty-two, ninety-two.
Ninety-two.
At least one of the two people will still be alive at ninety-two.
See, see, that's from at birth.
No, 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 this is at eighty-six.
No, but I mean, that's what he's thinking about.
No, this is sixty-five.
When he said that life expectancy is seventy, once you get to be sixty, your life expectancy is much better.
So if you're sixty-five and you retire.
One of your two spouses will still be alive, one of, one of you, not necessarily both of you, one of you, one of you, one of you. You're probably saying.
But this is somebody who's twenty-five today.
And so, so if you're making, so according to this website, according to this website, the expected distribution, if you, if you retire at, say, sixty-five with a defined contribution plan at sixteen percent, you're going to get about eighty percent of your pay till age ninety-two. And it, that's the suspected distribution rates.
Now, that's a, now, is that where you take the lump sum and then you reinvest it?
You get, no, you take out so much money every month.
You draw that down.
You draw that down, you draw that down.
So they have an option to do either one?
They can take, how much money is drawn down?
Why would they do that?
It's your, it's your 401A money, so.
Yeah, yeah.
The recommended rate of withdrawing money is four percent, five percent, six percent.
Or you can take it all at one time.
Well, you can take it all at one time, but then you, then you're going to put, throw it in, throw it in IRA, you're going to earn some money on that.
Right.
In order to have enough money to ask your lifetime, that you shouldn't take it all at one time and spend it. You're going to, this is the money you're going to spend every month.
Are we talking only the defined contribution plan?
Right.
Those two lines represent defined contribution.
So you compare.
People who have basically a cash balance at the end of their career with the city, and they, they may convert it into some other instrument, but they draw it down over the rest of their life.
So what we're trying to do is compare that to their defined benefit plan, to the blue line. What we're trying to do is compare, so you see it by sixty-four, sixteen percent of pay, it kind of crosses, it's about the same. Now, the four percent certain life, that's my number, the expected distribution is, is his number.
That's wrong.
The four percent number, which matches pretty close to his number, actually. Here, here's where you're getting first, John. When you retire at sixty-five, you have a twenty-five percent chance of making it to ninety. Okay, you're right, your average life expectancy is not ninety-two, but two people it is, one of them. But as one person, you have a twenty-five percent chance to make it to ninety. So that's what I assumed, this four percent certain, you're going to have enough money, how much money do you need to take on a monthly basis so you have enough income to make it to ninety?
So you run out at ninety.
You run out at ninety.
You run out at ninety.
Right. That's what, that's what, that's what my four percent certain line represents in those two lines. And it's very close to what Russ came up with, I was very happy to see that.
It's over Russ.
You mean the trend line is?
I don't have any thoughts.
Yes.
Oh, I see what you're saying, okay.
Yeah, there was, but his website came up with, was very similar to what I thought was a reasonable.
Okay, yeah, they are very similar.
Very similar.
And maybe what I should, I should say, what I did is I went out to some of the larger mutual fund companies, and they have recommendations based on your age as to how quickly you withdraw the money.
Take the money out, so you have no.
And I used the social security mortality rates to, to vet that, to make sure it was pretty close.
You can get so many different directions. So, so however, if, if, if I retire at sixty-five and I'm on the, I'm on the, the, the TCRS plan or whatever it is.
Regular defined benefit plan.
Defined benefit, I can get those mixed up, anyway. Then, but if I retire at sixty-five and die at seventy, then, then I don't get any of those benefits, I'm done, I'm done there.
That's right, that's right.
But if I retire at sixty-five on a, on the defined contribution plan, then that money's mine and is also my heir's money. So, so if I'm planning on living a lot longer, then without question, it looks like that defined contribution would be a much better, because I get all that money. I don't, I don't get all the money if I die early. And so if our employees die early, they're better off doing the fine contribution plan.
Well, if they take.
I'm not going to argue, I'm just making a statement.
But you're right, but you're right.
If they take joint and survivor, though, especially, the other alternative is if they take, if they're doing the defined contribution, they get a lump sum, and if they live longer than they expect to live, they may, I'm just doing both sides of the point, they may very well run out of money.
I'm saying.
Where the defined benefit, they withdraw until.
Well, they could live over their means too and be broke as well.
Twenty-five, twenty-five percent of people are going to live past ninety. Twenty-five percent of people are going to live past ninety in the current mortality table.
One of the things to look at, probably should have pointed out on this table, is, don't do that kind of math.
Someone else around there.
This is an interesting column to compare as we move through the ages. Existing program, what that annual benefit is, a less generous defined benefit program, and then the, the upper and lower ranges of a defined contribution as we move through the ages, and, and you'll see those, those gaps close as we move through here. So just look at that as we move through the rest of these examples.
Okay, all right.
But, but the comment's that, you know, for me, who, I need to live a long time to get my retirement, whereas my husband owns his, you know, and so it doesn't, he, he doesn't matter, you know, because we, we would get his money.
Say that again, he doesn't matter?
He probably watched what he was going to say.
Now, what I, what I have noticed in, in my practice, when the lump sum distribution was available from pension plan, you had a choice of the two, until about three or four years ago, everybody took the lump sum. That is now changing.
Well, well.
Now I'm seeing one more people decide, I don't want that lump sum, I want the guaranteed benefit.
Just because they don't want to manage it.
Well, for lots of, lots of reasons, lots of reasons.
The past ten years.
The stability of that base number coming in.
You know, you know, if you're dividing, you're going to get that hundred dollars a month for the rest of your life, or whatever the number is, where we define contribution plan.
Oh, you're saying that people, more people are going to the fine benefit plan?
More people are taking the option of the monthly benefit.
Oh, okay, I thought.
You know, back, back in the nineties, everybody took the lump sum.
I, I, I thought you said that most people are, are not taking the lump sum, but are reinvesting it and drawing it out over a full, but that's not what you said.
What I'm saying is, had you choice between the lump sum or a monthly benefit, back in the nineties, everybody took the lump sum.
Yeah.
And now it's, it's turning to everybody saying, wait a minute, I like the idea of taking.
Of course, that's directly related to the returns in the markets, I mean, without question, I would say. If the, if, if all of a sudden, if we continue with this, with this ten, eleven percent return, then all of a sudden that, that defined contribution looks awfully good.
And I think the important thing.
The market does well, the fine contribution looks good.
Some people like numbers and some people like charts. So wherever you are and your, the way you visualize things, that's important. My wife likes pictures, I like numbers. So, so, and I think the important thing is to look at where the lines cross your current defined benefit plan and where they cross. That's, that's the key, key, key issue there.
Okay, now on age, can we jump to thirty-five?
I was going to hear that one next, yeah.
Okay.
Thirty-five, same numbers.
How's that, why's that jump? Why's the blue line jumped so far?
He's looking at the chart already.
Because.
Because it doesn't jump anyplace else.
Right, because, because you have an early retirement of twenty-five years.
Yeah, if you, you're retiring.
So if you retire before.
Basically, your, your, your benefit is discounted by retiring before you've hit the.
So if you retire at fifty-five, with less than twenty-five years of service, you get a reduction of benefits. But at age sixty, that person has twenty-five years, it jumps up.
Full benefit, if you hit twenty-five.
That just occurs to me because a comment was made back on the, even on, at age twenty-five about the, you know, the, the individual, the, the survivor option and things like that, you know, those make a difference in here, and we're really not looking at them.
Right, you only get so many numbers, you get confused.
Okay, but, but still, that, if, if we went that way, that would still come into play.
We have that, yes.
Okay, okay.
It's not much identical to TCRS.
It's not much identical. Oh, okay, okay. Well, I can, I can look at that then, I, I, I just didn't want that to go by.
I'll be glad to share it with you.
No, I, I just didn't want that to go by because it was said and nothing else was thought about. I'm becoming very familiar with retirement options.
No. Let me go back to the, the chart with the numbers on it, because if, you might like numbers better than pictures, or, I don't know. When you look at this, you see the gap starting to close between the two defined benefits, and especially at, at thirty years on the most, you go, people who go to the max. Now, what you always see, though, is people who stay at the minimum throughout that time period are not going to have near the savings or near the, you know, benefit at the end of their career that, that they do under either defined benefit scenario or if somebody maxed this out more. It's, that's a factor out of it, but you'll see the difference closing between the higher contributor on defined contribution and, and the, the two defined benefits, especially the, the TCRS model or match.
Eric, if you go to the bottom and look at the percentage of final salary at thirty years, you can also see the differences. And they tell us now with social security for a person needs about eighty percent of their salary when they retire, so you can see how close or how far away they would be in and on the option.
Anything else on the charts? This one is essentially the same, same idea, you're just starting later and, and these are more tightly bunched, but the same idea, same numbers. Want me to move on to forty-five-year-old?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Here's the same thing, and you actually see a max contributor exceeding what's available in a, in the defined benefit, but, but that makes some sense in that you're dealing with that shorter life expectancy, so your, your percentage draws down, you're able to draw more out.
Good point.
At the end of that.
Right.
Time period. So that sort of equalizes that out a little bit there, too. Any questions on that chart? Same idea, min and max, the gap is a little closer just because there's less period of time for that difference to grow. And you see them pretty tightly bunched here. And in fact, though, it does not really exceed the, the existing program with employee contribution until the very upper ends of a, of a career, the longest, you know, longest serving time period, getting around age seventy. And then one of the other things we did, and Shirley may be better suited to explain this, but we wanted to show what the actual experience had been for our employees who are in 401A programs now. We require that employees put in three percent, right, three percent into that, and then they self-manage that. This has been the performance in a one, three, and five, one, three, five, and ten-year period.
We currently have three hundred and fourteen participants because prior to that, we had a cash balance account that employees were allowed to make a one-time irrevocable contribution, select that amount, and they were guaranteed a minimum of six percent.
And this is through the ICMA Retirement Corporation?
Right.
They provided us with the two most popular investment portfolios that cover almost two-thirds of our total balance. So this isn't everything, but it's those two examples that are most commonly used and how they've performed over the last couple of different time periods.
I'm assuming, this is another technical, on the ten-year, that would be, it would be this thing raised to the tenth power?
The ten-year would be the last ten years.
No, but I'm saying, it doesn't mean that, that what they put in is only one-point-four-six.
They have earned one-point-four-six percent over the last ten years.
You mean of their total, or if it's one-point-four-six to the tenth, which would be a big difference.
Stock market dilemma, two thousand, two thousand and one.
Gotcha, gotcha.
We've had another one recently.
Yes, okay.
Shirley, over three hundred and fourteen participants, how many of the, that is what percent actually?
Well, we have about six forty.
That's really, and that would have been everybody hired since whatever date that was.
It's 100% of everyone hired since 2000.
Hired since what?
2001 or '02.
I've got 314 participants in these two funds.
Oh, so that's not just hired since.
There are 314 that invest in these two funds.
But not everyone.
That's how it was, 640.
Not everyone's in this plan.
Gotcha, gotcha.
It's about two-thirds of everybody captured in these two investments. And we've required everybody from that time point on to participate in this, at 3%, but they self-direct the investment.
And before we go over, and we're going to say this 100 times, but we need to say it at each and every meeting, this is just for new employees. The old employees have their plan, and their plan will be what their plan is. So, we're just really saying, okay, for the new employees, what options do we want to provide for them? And currently, there is no option, so we really need to move on with something.
Now, here's the thing, maybe I didn't pick it up if it's in here, how much will these different ones cost the city, unless it's just that very first number there, you know, on the mall? But that can't be, can it? How much?
Well, that wouldn't be the number if it's based on earning 6%.
That's right.
But these, well, we're using our historical data, so.
No, but I mean.
We don't know what we're going to go.
I mean, contributions from employer, it stays the same at age 25 and 35, so that, you know, that doesn't sound right if you're.
It's only because we use the same number of years.
And the same salary.
And the same salary beginning.
We started everybody at $35,000.
But.
But at 45.
35, then you're not going to be paying them. Well, you're not going to have the same number. That's right. That's what I could, I'd like for us to look at that some more, because you can't be paying the same amount in for a person that's 25 as you do as a person that's 45, because their, what do you call it, their business, their business life is not the same.
Well, if they were hired in as a pay grade 13, they would be, and that was the assumption of the.
No, I'm saying, but if they worked 40 years.
That's right, compared to.
Instead of 25 years.
Then wouldn't we be paying different?
Would make any difference.
No, I think it would, wouldn't it? You're paying in a different amount.
You're paying according to pay grade.
Yeah, but.
No, but.
But the amount of the contribution, that would change.
But aren't you paying them for 30 years? Isn't that the assumption that you made here?
The assumption is, this is at the end of 30 years.
Yes, no matter what.
No matter when you start.
That's what that top part represents. Now, we could run different.
Oh, okay.
Numbers.
It's the same number of years, the same salary.
We could show that, though. If somebody works 20 years, is obviously going to have less of a contribution than somebody who worked 30 over that time, both from them or from.
From us, from us.
Employee or in the employer, because they're fewer years.
So, that is.
Well, I think one point, maybe we're going to say, if we hire, I think the question was, and this is where this came up, is that we tend to hire, a lot of our policemen and our firemen, when they come on at age 25, tend to see this as a career. So, they may stay here till 65. On the other hand, there are other people that, the other people tend not to do that as much. So, I guess the point is, is that what does the difference cost in those programs to the city, to the average employee that might stay, that might start to work at 25 and work till 65? And that number is not reflected on here.
It's only, if I remember.
And I think that's, isn't that kind of what you were?
That is, that is really my question there.
Because that was one of the arguments that you gave to us, is that this, they see this as a career, and that people who see this as a career think that the defined benefit plan is better than defined contribution plan. But that people who don't see this career, that might be the same, but we also need to see to us what the cost to us would be. So, let's take a fireman, a policeman, and say, and do that. If they hire them at 25, if it is their career and they work till 65, what does that cost the city? What do each one of those plans cost the city in that, in the whole of the life of that term?
Quite honestly, we could definitely do that. Police and fire normally.
Don't stay the whole.
They don't work that long.
The normal one, and I say normal, there are exceptions, but normally, they don't work.
The 25 years.
About 25 years.
Yes.
25 to maybe 30.
A magic number.
Now, and I need.
But then that does make a difference, then. If you think everybody's going to leave after 25 years.
We have a lot in the public works departments.
Okay, that work.
35 years, even into the 40s, years, not ages, but that many years, Amina.
Whereas, the public safety would not really be, probably able to do that as easily as those.
And then, there's Jackie, who I'm looking at right now. Jackie's got shades on right now, though. He's looking.
Actually, it's our host, you're out.
He's crying, dude.
All right, let me ask you this, when it says current plan, does that mean the current plan, or it says current plan with 5% employee, I guess employee contribution?
This is the option, yeah, option two, which is taking the current plan, but requiring 5% employee contribution.
Gotcha.
So, we took it, what the direction, other direction we got last time we met was, we can't stay the way we are, which is option one. There has to be, at a minimum, the existing program with some employee contribution. We chose 5%.
That sounds good.
We suggested, instead of doing the 3%.
That's a mandatory contribution.
In 401A, to do it in here.
And why was it we couldn't stay the way we were?
Because it's breaking us.
We're breaking us.
Sure.
We're going, we're breaking us.
We've had a substantial increase in the relative cost of this within our budget, and the direction we've gotten is we need to find a more sustainable way to manage the cost, but still provide a meaningful benefit to the employee.
It would be helpful at one point just to see what that's going to be for all the current employees, to see what the cost per employee is going to be.
Well, if the stock market keeps going down, it's going to be negative.
No, I know, but I'd just like to see, is it, how much better is this going to be? How much better is this going to be?
Compared to the existing program.
Yes, yes.
It depends a lot on what the, what the, the stock market.
Right, that, but.
And options two and three, absolutely. Option.
No, I mean, compared to what it is today, I mean, like, if the stock market starts rebounding, then.
Well, we get a better rate of return. The city gets a better rate of return, too.
Defined contribution.
That's right.
Right, that helps.
That would make a difference with the cities.
Yeah, the market overperforms.
The extra pays, yeah.
Then our, the difference we make up is less. So, it works both ways.
The problem is, is that as we sit here, we can look at 5,000 different scenarios, and we're never going to be able to come up with.
Oh, no.
This, and so, I think what we, I think that we can get so bogged down in the details that we forget about the, okay, in general, what would be something that would be advantageous for us, and also advantageous, us being.
Absolutely.
Dollar-wise, and also advantageous to when we hire somebody. And to me, I like getting back to sort of a, and Eric and I talked about, sort of a mixture, where you have options to do both. Because if you've got, if you've got somebody like a fireman or policeman who sees this as a 25-year career, then that's a path they might like to take, but a lot of other people thinking they're going to be here four or five years and go on to something else, then that, putting that 8% in and getting 8% match is great, which is what I would do. And so.
You're making 100% of your money.
Absolutely, what a great deal. If I'm going to be able to pull that out in five years when I'm gone, then that's a great thing, then I've got a raise. I mean, I'm making more money than I thought I was going to make. So, I like the idea of kind of throwing in an option, and Eric sort of said, which I kind of liked, is that at one point in time, you have, you can't do it continually, but at some point in time, you say, okay, I want to flop, whatever that might be. In other words, so there's a period of time, so you might come on and you'd be a defined contribution guy, and then all of a sudden, you say, I just love this place, and I'm going to stay here forever, and I want to have a defined benefit plan. So, at some point in time, you have an option to go back.
But you're going to have to pay in, though.
You may or may not.
Yeah, or not, or not.
This is what we call a conversion program.
Oh, good, okay.
You like the segue? It was a pretty good one.
It's very good. Essentially, it is a blend of option two and option five. And the employee, when they're hired, makes an initial choice of being in the defined contribution world with a one-for-one employee, matched with a range of either minimum of 3%, maximum of 8%, or they could just choose upfront to go on the defined benefit. And defined benefit would be the existing pension program with the 5% employee contribution. And there would be a one-time conversion option. What we're suggesting at this point, it would be vesting time period, which right now is five years to vest. So, at vesting, you would have a one-time choice to say, you know, I'm going to be here for a career, I want to shift over to defined benefit. But what would happen at that point is whatever you've earned, whatever your balance is at that time, gets converted into the defined benefit program. So, even though you have five years of service, the amount of money you have may only be enough to support four years' worth of credit.
Okay.
So, you would be either.
I see what you're talking about.
At a four-year service credit.
Right.
Or you'd have a one-time opportunity to buy that fifth year, or whatever, to get yourself back up to your full year of service.
That just determined on what the market did.
That would just be whatever.
Whatever, whatever it is.
And if you were an 8% or a 3%, whatever you happened to be, wherever you were in that range, and how the market performed, and your investments performed, but they're going to, whatever they have in their balance will determine whatever their conversion is.
Right.
And then, they have a choice to make if they want to contribute further to get up to the true years of service.
So, my recommendation is, we're going to bring this forward to BOMA, that recommendation for consideration, because we've got to, we've got to get on with it.
Yeah, I agree. I do, I mean, you know, I would only want to see the numbers for the current plan as it is, just to say, is it worth to change these? Obviously, it is, but I just, I just want to, I just want to see it, I just want to see it.
You can add the employer and employee dollars on option two, and you'll arrive at that number.
Now, we say that again?
But not based upon where we, not based upon all current employees.
No, right, it may be. Tell me again what you were saying?
Well, this is all based on a mythical recruit, 25 years of age.
Good.
That's going to work for, in this particular scenario, 30 years. I think we set it up as 30 years, something that was across the board.
Gotcha, gotcha.
So, if you take the 116 and the 83 and add it together, that's the city's contribution. The one thing that you probably, if you didn't notice it, is that the biggest input in this are earnings over the years. And I tried to break those down by percentages, where you've got the percentage, you know, in the end, the employer contributes 25% of the money. In scenario two, the employee would contribute 18. 57% of the final benefit is coming from the earnings over all those years of being in there. That's why it's so important to have the 25 or 30 years that you must work, because every extra year you work, you're building up earnings on this. But option two is just, option one is split.
Gotcha.
With the 5% contribution.
Okay, okay, gotcha. So, it winds up being 200,000.
The only thing I'd say to that is that, what we've said is, is we don't want to get too many, we don't want to get too many more options.
No, no, no.
We've already got enough options with what we've got with the current. And if you go with option two, and you go with option five, and then you go with option six.
No, we're saying select one of these options.
Yeah. But in five years, you can go to option six.
No, 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 we're saying option six is the deal, so you.
You start out with one.
You start out with one or the other, and if five years.
Two plus five equals six. Isn't that right?
But you only, you really have one, you have one.
Where's the actu-?
One pension program.
He can make it happen.
You would have one pension program that gives the employee a choice of the very simple defined contribution, one-for-one match, and they manage their investment. But they can convert at vesting to defined benefit if they choose. But they have a contribution in that as well, as a 5% employee contribution there as well. But this would be the pension program for everybody hired after February 15th of this year, and all new hires going forward. This would be the one and only program they have, but that gives them a choice of defined contribution or defined benefit, because there's been some discussion that a lot of folks are used to that, especially if this might be your second career. You might like the defined contribution as a different option for you, if you've got some other setup for your retirement, or maybe vice versa, I don't know. But we think this gives us the greatest degree of flexibility, but this would be the program. We wouldn't have choices among two, three, four, and five. It would just be a program that provided a one-time choice, crossover choice. If you thought you were going to be here longer term, it would make sense that you might choose the defined benefit.
But they could start on the defined benefit and stay on it throughout their career, for those that we are concerned about.
If they just lock in.
That do not want to invest or are not certain how to invest, and they could lock.
They could just lock in and that's it in their head.
And it would be a great recruitment tool, to be able to offer.
Right. That they, both are, both, and that there's somebody that is.
Either way you look at it, you've significantly reduced the city obligation from where we already have.
That, what you told me.
You've either, at a minimum, you've provided a 5% contribution from the employee that we don't have today, that helps provide that participation in the program. You also, for those who choose defined contribution, you've also capped essentially the city contribution there as well. And what we, what we may find out as we do this over multiple years, we may find out there's a real leaning of employees over time to go to, to go to defined contribution, or go to the, you know, we may see people sort of voting with their choice, and that may give us some other, other direction, longer term, in terms of what people really want out of this program. But it does give a full range of options in terms of the level of contribution, as well as a defined benefit versus a defined contribution.
There's only one thing, and I appreciate the comments that you made, they're all, they've been very helpful. On option two, at age 25, if you work till age 65, you'll be getting more than you were, than you're making when you retire.
We have a cap at 100% on our defined.
On the defined benefit?
The defined salary that's on there was based on 30 years.
At 30 years, they're making 82 at the end of that time period.
Well.
If they've had 3% growth over 30 years.
Okay.
From $35,000 today.
It's still.
In 2040, they'd be making 82.
We had to pick a couple of bullets of years to move, to show apples to apples.
But do you have a cap?
Still have a cap, yes.
Are you going to have a cap anyway?
Oh, yeah, I remember.
So, you'd have the cap that it won't be.
More than 100%.
100%.
100%.
So, they take it at whatever, and then.
If they work 50 years, they would go home with 100% of their average salary.
Plus social security.
That's right.
Plus social security.
And it would actually be of the average three, so unless their salary was the same the last three years, it would be a little less than it's the maximum.
Okay, but that would go to the three years, the five years was on option three?
Yes.
If I got that.
Is the cap now including social security?
No.
No.
It's just your salary, yeah.
But that only works if you, if you did early, early retirement, right? Even now, if you, if you early retired, then you.
We do not have any social security offset.
Anymore.
They did away with that, I think, in 98, 99. One of the changes.
Late 90s.
When y'all started contributing to social security, then it didn't apply anymore.
That's not, that's not it.
Yeah, yeah. You've always contributed to social security. No, there were, there were public plans, because I was in one.
A lot, there are public plans that don't contribute.
Eric, you said.
No. Would I get, no, so.
Like, like the railroad, the railroad benefit.
There's plans. There's plans.
All right, we're getting off track. We're going to go on.
Good, okay.
Thank you. I know it's a lot of work.
And it was really helpful with the additional information.
Item five, six, seven, eight, and nine, or event application, anybody got any questions on those?
Yes, only, only seven.
Seven. All right.
Two things, the $1,000 refundable damage deposit to the city, that's probably, that's probably a little light. Is that normal?
That's normal.
And also, I noticed it says that we're, we're, I guess we're okay in the event to And also, I noticed it says that we're, we're, I guess we're okay in the event to go into the county, into Rutherford County, too?
No, we're with both counties.
So, so we don't know what they're doing with the counties?
No, we're just approving the parties, no work with our.
That's it?
My question.
On number eight, I want to be clear. Last year, the board wanted to use the traditional route that the Cowboys have used for homecoming. We just want to, the staff has recommended an alternative and had that discussion again this year. The organizer wants to use the traditional route. You just need to tell us that you want the traditional route versus this other option.
Mayor?
Yes. We had this discussion last year.
We sure did, and I sure hope it turns out the same way this year.
We just used the traditional route.
And that would be my request, either that, or tell everybody that wants to have their parade around the square that we have a new one, a new route, and see how much they like it. I appreciate staff's concerns, but there's a parade, and then there's a parade. And either we should let people have their parade, or we should let no one have their parade. So Franklin High, Centennial High, all these, you know, the schools that want to have their, their parade around the square, we either need to tell them all yes, or we need to tell them all no.
What is unique about this timing is it's a Friday evening versus other events which are a Saturday or a middle of the day, which is what the high schools do, which has less traffic implication. That's, that's a little bit why this is probably a little more disruptive than those, and that's why that's been a little more of what we've looked at. But absolutely, board's call in terms of.
We did it last, I mean.
We did it last year, and I've been a part of it for, well, this will be the first year in seven years that I haven't been a part of it. But, but to date, I have not had anyone complain about it. And one thing that makes this one a little different than some of the homecoming parades, this one is all motorized. So it begins and ends fairly quickly and is, and is all, all done with vehicles. Whereas some of the others, even though they may be at a different time of day, involve marching bands.
Gotcha.
Okay. Now, does that mean that it's on an agenda tonight, do we need to pull that from the consent agenda that was specific?
It's on consent.
But which?
We know what you mean.
Okay, all right, okay. Everybody, everybody's okay with that?
Yeah, the traditional one. Includes that route, so.
All right, okay.
You're approving their application.
As submitted.
Yes. On a consent.
That's what they submitted, right?
Yeah. So if you're approving that, that's approving the application.
Okay.
We want to talk about number nine.
Well, I wasn't going to, unless you just wanted to.
Let's talk about. I think we've got representatives in the, in the audience, if they'd like to come up and. Now, we're so fortunate this year to have Ms. Essler, that's the, from the Battlefield Trust. And she has experience in, in her previous jobs with reenactments.
How are you?
And this is John Marler, that also is with the trust. And he also has been a reactor, a reenactor and participant.
We're all reactors, that he's just a reenactor. Some more than others, actually.
Some are reenactors.
I reenact every day tomorrow. It's like Groundhog Day.
Yeah, this is kind of dress rehearsals for us to build into a, a big event. That'll be a national event that we're gonna put in here for the anniversary of the, of the Battle of Franklin in 2014. So we're very fortunate to have their expertise and guidance. For many of the people that had wanted to work on this hadn't had past experience. So we're really thankful for them and the Battlefield Trust.
Well, you're great to flatter us in that way, but there is a lot of experience in Franklin and these reenactments. We're just thrilled. You're great to flatter us in that way, Mike, but it's, there's a lot of people in Franklin who's, who've had a great, a lot of experience with reenactments. The city task force on battlefields had been organizing the reenactments, and the mayor asked them, when it transitioned to be a commission, if they would get out of the event business. So the Battle of Franklin Trust stepped up to the plate and asked the group if they would mind if we coordinated it on behalf of all the interested parties. So we're working with a group of all the interested parties in preparation for the 150th. So this event application is to celebrate the 146th reenactment of the Battle of Franklin, and it's called Civil War Days rather than the 146th reenactment of the Battle of Franklin. And we've got the cooperation of a wonderful reenactment unit called Claiborne's Division. A gentleman who's the chief of staff of that division happened to have just moved to Brentwood and asked if he could help us. So Joe Grossen has been helping us with tactical and also reenactor organization. So it's freed a lot of the folks who are interested in participating to focus on the parts of the event that really interest them the most. So we're gonna be having a lot of fun events for the people in the community and also for the tourists who are Civil War travelers who want to take advantage of the experience of learning more about the five bloodiest hours of the Civil War. Does anyone have any questions for us about this event?
And the dates are?
The dates are October 16th and 17th. It's gonna be at Harlinsdale Farm this year, which provides a wonderful setting on the hillside for spectators to view a beautiful field that is perfect for staging the strategic reenactment. So we'll be setting up on Friday, and then the public will be able to tour the two encampments on Saturday and Sunday. And at 1:30 each day, the reenactments will start. We'll also have some lectures, we'll probably also have some events for children that we're still working out some details of, all of which will be within, within the Harlinsdale Farm. And some, some vendors to service both the people who are partaking of the activities that day as well as the reenactors who will be encamping there.
So you're setting up on the 15th, the 16th, and 17th is the day that the public will be able to view, okay?
All right, thank you very much, appreciate it. Okay, item number 10, consideration of memorandum of understanding between the Williamson County Board of Education and the City of Franklin regarding Breezeway Elementary Project. You have a copy of the hot off the press, I think.
You should have received, yeah, signed copies of both the memorandum of understanding.
Came through on an email about 4:00, 3:30.
And the interlocal, both items 10 and 11 are on your voting meeting tonight. These are the final agreements that have been developed. The memorandum of understanding basically describes the positions of both city and Williamson County schools related to this and, and describes sort of the unique circumstances that were working under here as well as essentially reserves the rights of both parties in, in doing this. And really sort of talks about the process that we're, we've been moving through and describes it in that way. The interlocal agreement is much more the, the terms that have been developed and were reflected in the letter that Dr. Looney sent us a couple of weeks ago that described what the partnership would look like and what the specific commitments were of the Williamson County schools to this project and to the various improvements that would help this project move forward, again, as, as part of or a condition of related to the rezoning. And so those same conditions are in here dealing with sanitary sewer capacity. This has taken a little different form than what was described in the letter, but has been discussed between both the respective staffs in that it would really take the form of additional payment on top of normal tap fees, additional tap fees paid in upfront that equate to the additional sewer capacity that the schools would generate and be responsible for. The traffic signalization would be paid for directly by Williamson County schools at both McEwen and Wilson Pike, and at Wilson Pike and Clovercroft, and that we would work together to have those in place by the start of school, or the opening of the school. And then the other key component is a million dollar contribution towards other traffic mitigation measures that the city identifies and moves forward with. One element that's present in this is a two-year timeframe within which we need to spend this money. And that's driven by essentially the bond issue here that, that the schools will, will issue probably in October. And there's a two-year exemption provided for in terms of the arbitrage calculation. We do the same thing with a lot of our, our debt, that you use the, use it for project uses within the two-year and, and that provides an exclusion related to the arbitrage calculation, et cetera. So that's what's going on here. I think it's a good deadline for us anyway to move forward and work through and advance the projects that we've identified already. They've also addressed generally that the project includes, incorporates elements related to the Breezeway entrance improvements that had also been identified as, as necessary, as well as some other general landscape improvements that, that we've heard concern about really from the beginning of the project, but those are also incorporated as, as described in the site plan that was submitted on August 5th. So that's basically what that agreement covers. It memorializes directly what had been in more of a proposal form in the letter a couple of weeks ago.
One thing I do want to, just kind of a point of order on tonight's meeting, and you may have noticed it, but we, we're doing new business in front of old business tonight for a one-time shot. And the reason being is we wanted to make sure that, that these two agreements were approved before we went on to old business and did the last reading of that. We didn't want to do one without the other. So we'll have a change in order, which we won't do again. We'll go back to the normal processes, but that's why that's there. And this is both for 10 and 11. Anybody got any questions or comments?
When you're talking about the signalization, in an email this week, there was the request that, I believe there was a blinking light in front of the school. They were, residents were requesting that that be a permanent light, you know, a regular stop light, red light, green light.
Yeah, there's lights that are part of the school zone. They talked about a traffic signal, that's a county road on a county intersection. They'd have to meet warrants and have to work through the county to provide that. I, I don't know that that would necessarily meet warrants based on, on how, what's coming out there. It's a relatively small development onto Clovercroft, but that's really not something we have any direct involvement in.
And, and we, the people at the planning commission got the traffic impact study, and I did not read the whole thing, but I did read that. And it, it does not appear, as little as I know, that it's going to meet the requirement to. You know, you have to have so much traffic going both ways, and, and at this time, and I don't even know whether later.
You gotta be more equal for a signal to make sense.
Dana?
I'm just relating.
Right, exactly.
Um, the, on the sewer issue, do we, do we usually let the applicant engineer tell us how much the difference would be?
Yes, and that's actually what was required previously of the developer, that their engineer would come in and, and document for us with our approval the additional capacity necessary for that development.
Okay, that's a subtle but meaningful difference. Because Article I sanitary sewer divests the city of any authority to approve or withhold approval of the upsides. It just says, the engineer, the board's engineer, the school board's engineer will compare the use with, with and without the school. And then the board will ta, will pay tap fees based upon what its engineer said. We, I, I know that we often rely upon the applicant's engineers, but do we not also retain some discretion to quibble with those numbers sometimes? Because that's not what this says. And I just wonder if we shouldn't treat this applicant like any other and reserve that authority. That's a, that could be a significant ticket item there.
Well, the, and the other part that is not a part of this is the existing arrangement or agreement that that developer's responsible for the upgrade at the appropriate time remains. That has not gone away. This has just added an additional factor to that calculation overall, and we've asked them to calculate the difference and pay relative to that.
Well, I'm, I'm not trying to get, I'm not trying to rearrange the deal. But we're taking, we're taking, what, 28 homesites and turning it into a school. I, I suppose that that's an increase in, in SFUEs. Yes, okay.
Possibly.
So the question is, how many? And the way this is written, it's a little different than what we normally do. What we normally do is require the applicant to tell us what they think the upsize is. But our staff retain, the board retains the right to approve the submitted numbers, don't we? We don't normally delegate not only the calculation, but the approval. Because the way this is written, the school board's engineer will say how much the check is. And we don't have any authority to say, well, we think it's different, the way it's written.
We need to ask the engineering, because I don't think they run all those numbers again. I may be wrong, but.
Well, I, I think they at least review them.
That's right.
But if we, I mean, I just, I recall, I think, that we have from time to time had a difference of opinion that mattered. And under this, the way this is written, we could have a difference of opinion, but it wouldn't matter. Because we would have contracted away the authority to, to argue about how much. And I'm not trying to pick a fight, but when I read a contract that says, we're gonna tell you how much the check is gonna be, and you're gonna like it, I just feel like I ought to raise the question.
You are correct in that we do review the, the plans for pump stations, collection systems, that sort of thing.
And once in a while, we think, hey.
And provide comments back.
Or, so I just, I.
But it is, isn't, there is a, there is a allowable amount per student, times 800, versus the allow, allowable amount for 28 homes. And, you know, I, maybe I'm missing something along the way, but whatever the difference is, is whatever the difference is, is it all? Is that what?
Well, I would, I mean, I go into this with the idea that any two competent engineers ought to come up with roughly the same numbers.
Right.
Okay? But sometimes they don't. My concern is not that the engineers will be, will, will be crooked or stupid. My concern is that we have delegated the authority to say how much it is without reserving even the power of review. And that is the point that is unlike other deals. We regularly say to applicants, hey, you've got to do the engineering, you've got to submit the plans, you've got to tell us how much it's gonna be. But they submit them for review. And it's common that we, you know, our staff goes through and says, yes, we concur, that's, that's a legitimate calculation, and that's a realistic projection, and, and that's what it's gonna cost. Fine. The, the difference here is, the way this is written, the school board's engineer says what the difference is, then the school board writes a check based upon that, period, end of story. And we don't ever have the authority to say, we beg to differ, we think it's a little different number.
That ultimately, the, the developer has the responsibility to make the upgrade at the appropriate time in the future. That, that is outside of this agreement, but that remains.
Well, this is about tap fees, not just pump, pump station.
Right, but they're gonna pay additional tap fees beyond that to, related to this calculation of additional capacity they may be putting in versus the others.
I want, I want more rather than fewer people obliged. I mean, if we're making this deal, I don't want to count on the developer. I don't want to have, I don't want to be in a position where the school board says, hey, repair graph one. We did the math, we wrote you the check, thanks for coming. And then we're left to go talk to the developer about making up the difference. I, all I'm asking for here is that we say in this part of the contract that subject to review and approval will take their check.
Has it been reviewed, Mark?
No, those calculations haven't yet been.
They haven't even been done.
They haven't been done, yeah.
That's the point. If we had them before us today and our staff said, the number sounds good.
Why, why, instead of speculating, why don't we, we've got people from the school board, let's ask them if that would be an acceptable change to that agreement.
Don't we have an identical school at West Haven?
We do. You don't have that problem, we'll just make an amendment to that.
Yeah, all I'm asking for is this, giving the opportunity to review and approve.
Let's ask rather than speculate, I like that. Okay, we'll make, Mr. McClanahan, if you'll make that amendment to that motion, that would be great. You'll fix it before we get there?
I'll work with them.
Okay, all right, that'd be good. All right, anything else, any other comments, questions, concerns?
Let's see, termination of agreement, minor days, we're gonna be ready to turn the soil. This is Article 6, termination of agreement.
That just says if they don't, yeah, if they don't start.
Right, I mean, just making sure, because that can nullify things. I'll be right back when we start it. Turn it, okay.
Okay, um, we will, this will be on tonight's agenda. Item number 12 is the consideration of the reestablishment of the Franklin Leadership University Employee Development Program and initiation of customer service training.
One of the things we looked at and actually came up in the pension discussion, you know, we've got 110 employees that can retire in the next five years. And one of the challenges all organizations. And one of the challenges all organizations face, city governments, businesses, everyone, is how you build that next group of leaders and, and folks that are gonna step up and lead the organization going forward. And one of the things that, uh, the City of Franklin did in the last few years had been the creation of a leadership university that, that identified employees across the organization and took a year to invest in them, to develop them as leaders. And, um, that, that's something that, uh, I'd like to see us, uh, reinstitute and do on a regular basis, probably not every year, but maybe every other year, uh, so that we continue to build that pipeline of, of employees that are willing to step up and, and, and learn to be leaders. About half of the group that went through the previous, uh, classes of this have been promoted. I think that speaks to the quality of those individuals, and also, though, that, uh, this type of program that I think helps support and facilitate the, uh, development of those employees. What I'd like to see us do is, is reinstitute this program. Uh, it, it's not something we anticipated in the budget. Uh, we've identified about $15,000 within the existing budget that could go towards the cost. Uh, the other, other opportunity that's come up in sort of negotiating this opportunity is, uh, one of the things I'd like to see us do is do some additional development related to, uh, customer service, and in particular, I'd like to target our customer service and revenue area as well as our building and neighborhood services. Those are the places where I'd say we have the most, lack of a better term, retail customer interaction, and, and we really haven't put a lot of focus on the development and training in that area, and I think that's a complimentary, uh, program that, uh, that, uh, this, uh, that has been offered to do along with this leadership university to, to work with those folks. So if the board is so inclined, I, I would really like to pursue this. Uh, it, it may ultimately require some level of, uh, budget amendment to accommodate it. Uh, we also might generate enough savings during the year to offset it. I, I don't know for sure. We know we've identified about half of that funding already. Um, there might be a few things we can do on the cost side to bring that cost down a little bit, but I'd, I'd like to offer the full program to this group of about 24 employees, uh, over the next year to help, help them with, uh, their development and help our organization long-term. And Shirley can speak to it, she's been involved with its creation and its, its implementation firsthand. I've just witnessed the, uh, good people who, who have done it, so, uh, I, I can't probably speak to it as well as she can, so...
Well, I can just add that I did sit through it the first year, and I was amazed at how involved our employees became. If you would look across the city, we could name the ones that have been through it, and you will see that they have been promoted to assistant directors or directors, um, other very important positions within the city. I think we really get a lot for our money in this. Um, and it is a very good tool in our succession planning.
Shirley, am I reading, is this a you-to-long program?
It is, there, it will start, there are two one-on-one sessions, one at the beginning and one at the end, and then there are, I believe, seven, um...
Seven full months.
Monthly workshops, and, um, we do normally have them at Ode Hall. They're good to let us use that facility, it's off-site, they spend the day together, there's a good, uh, team building network. We try to set them at tables with people that are not, they're not in the department with, so they get to meet others and learn to work together. It's a really motivational, good program. I'd like to invite any of you to sit one day and watch and observe, it's really a great program.
How do you select the people that participate in?
In the past, we had nomination forms that, um, I went online and pulled some things and had, um, the assistant directors and the director and the city administrator look at. Um, we had nominations from their supervisors, department directors, assistant city administrators, city administrators, um, and in the past, the city administrator and I looked at it, and usually we would select one board member to look at the nominations. Each person nominated had, had to submit a written essay on why they should be selected, why they wanted to participate, and actually, some people that we thought would be really good that didn't submit it were not selected. First year, we, uh, looked and pretty much talked people into it. The next year, we even had people submitting their own nominations, wanting to be in it, and sadly enough, we didn't have enough funds to have everybody in it, but we had about 75 the second year wanting to be in it, so, really good turnout.
That's correct. Thank you, it's a good item.
And some of the money would come from already budgeted funds, but we would have to do more.
Okay, item number 13, consideration of interlocal agreement and amendment with Williamson County Government for the transfer of received funds from the Justice Assistant Grant Program, amount of $5,336 to Williamson County Government. Any comments or questions on that? You go sit down. We're getting money.
What is it? Who's still sitting?
We'd like to see you, but... Item number 14, consideration orders 2010-58 in orders to amend various sections of the City Franklin Municipal Code, Title 17, refuse and trash disposal related to codifying of various fees and penalties.
It's kind of the same thing over there.
I think we'll just call this portion of our agenda Vernon's Corner.
14, 15, 14 and 15, anybody got questions on that? All right, item number 16, consideration program year 2010-11, emergency shelter grant sub recipient agreement for bridges at Williamson County and my friend's house.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Alderman. Through the Community Development Black Grant Program, uh, the state receives funding and then allocates some to various communities for emergency shelter grants, in which we've been getting every year, and we're more of a pass-through entity for those funds. This year, we're allocated a little bit over $34,000, and, uh, Bridges and my friend's house are the two entities locally that qualify for those funds as they had in the past. They requested an amount as, uh, as you see, Bridges, $26,809, and my friend's house, $5,600, and the rest for administration for us to monitor, uh, their expenditures.
All right, thank you. All right, we're gonna adjourn until 7:00.